All right, well, we're going to call this meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Chukri apologizes, he's traveling out of state for business, won't be joining us, but will certainly be here in spirit. And we do today have economic development presentations, so obviously the board is very focused on economic development, and we have a lot of great partners in the community, and that's what today's presentations are going to be all about. So first, we have the economic development presentations. I see Mr. Camacho there, if you'd like to come on up and join us. Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to see each of you today. Morning, County Administrator. How are you doing?
Great.
Very good. Well, I understand we have an expeditious timeframe today, so I will-
Thank you for being sensitive. We've got a couple of things going on in the county these days.
What I understand.
Wouldn't you prefer a fast presentation now?
I'm okay with that. I'm sure you would too. So thanks for the opportunity to be here. I will, I think, I'm allotted about 10 minutes or so. I'm going to give you the quick run-through. I went through this with the board of, the executive board this past week, and have a full board meeting coming up on Thursday. So, yeah, I know you're intimately familiar with the organization. One thing that has changed over the last few years, we've continued to drive additional private sector investments, so that the public sector, including the county and the 22 cities that co-invest in the organization, are able to garner leverage off of the public money that's been committed. Thus far, in this past year and our results, we've driven a 40-to-1 return on your investment. So for every dollar the county puts in, you're getting a direct $40 back, and with all of the projects that have located within the region across the entire market. And that's all direct, not induced. And so we have Sarah Merly with Applied Economics perform that economic analysis for us. And so I'm going to run through just a quick recap of this past year, and feel free to stop me and ask questions at any moment. So what you see here is a table that reflects our goal status for the last year's contracts. So you'll see on the second column, where it says "goal status," each of our respective communities collectively have a total output that we must hit to keep our contract satisfied. And you'll see this year, $380 million of payroll-induced, $55,000 average high-wage salary. And the blue column references our actual output. So 50 new companies, which is record by 20%, entered the market a year ago. So, as you know, the capital markets are probably as volatile as they've been in the last, you know, in the last two months, as they've been in the last two years. And yet, the pipeline results over the last 12 months have been the strongest on record for the organization. I attribute a lot of that to the market, to leadership of cities and county here in the region, and we are now considered one of the top elite markets for corporate investment. And that can be attributed largely to the strong labor pool that we have, and the production out of ASU and GCU and the Community College Network. The whole pivot away from just focusing on cost, which is still a factor, but the permanent factor today is the pipeline of talent. As you're saying, most markets across the US have sub-4% or 4.5% unemployment. Phoenix, Greater Phoenix, in addition to Greater Dallas, Atlanta, and Charlotte are really the four markets that are doing extraordinarily well as we speak. So again, all the projects we've had the pleasure of working on induce what you see in the blue column here. And those 50 projects have spread across the region, so they're not in one particular district or area, but they are, we're seeing a lot of investment going into, and even in this year, a lot going into District 4. We've had a fair amount of new projects going into that area in the tail end of last year, and then starting this year, we've had nine new projects that have located just in the first two months, and half of those were in the West Valley. So we're seeing this change in terms of getting these entire, the entire region in terms of, when it characterizes, you know, assembled lands with appropriate infrastructure and commute sheds, we're seeing that the entire region evolve together, which is a very fortuitous position for our market to be in. So I'm just, I could typically-
What's the parameter for what you guys consider a high-wage job?
So a high-wage job is considered 130% of the county median wage, which is roughly 40, mid-40s, you know, average.
Okay.
And so we set that to, the last two years running, it's been 125%. We bumped that up this year. We want to continue to see the wage and per capita income evolve, and we've seen that in the last year, which is very promising.
Okay.
So typically, I'd walk through every project, I won't do that today, but you see a nice smattering of advanced manufacturing, health IT, healthcare overall, with these brands here at Deloitte's with their Technology Center, Creighton University adding medical school capacity in the urban center. Lemonade on the far right is a high-growth insurance startup that's expanded here. Honeywell's added two new, expanded divisions in this market. Amazon, very active with their fulfillment centers, but other IT operations as well. Allstate, again, this is just the first half, second half. You can see pretty significant, again, industry-diverse set of new companies, some headquarters, some regional headquarters, and that's the shift, if I may, just 10 years ago, what I was seeing is mostly consumer product manufacturing and entry-level customer service and sales. We don't see virtually either of those anymore. We're seeing advanced manufacturing, and we're seeing a lot of the shared services and advanced IT, cybersecurity, anti-money laundering, those kind of divisions are coming here because of our strong presence of financial services.
To the extent that you're seeing corporate headquarters come, what are the key factors there that are attracting them?
Sure. So we've had a couple in the last few years, and some publicly traded headquarters move here. Mostly it's the supply chain tied to advanced manufacturing or aerospace and defense, and others are wanting strategically access the Latin American markets from the Southwest. Even Benchmark Electronics, a year prior, that moved into Tabby, which is a public company, multi-billion-dollar enterprise, they have a lot of their customer bases in this market in aerospace and IoT and healthcare. And a lot of their growth they see in Mexico and other Latin American markets. So that's a very positive sign that we're seeing those kind of companies. Just a quick illustration here, and these are just the tech-only, you'll see just as it reads along the top, tech-only divisions. Again, I could go through each one, but Zillow, again, 10 years ago, the Zillow opportunity would have been most likely a customer service operation. Zillow's AI division is now, was shifted here out of Seattle this past year. And again, some of these other units are, we're now being known for the division of customer success. So it's kind of like a shared service for customer service, IT, sales, and we're moving up the food chain as it relates to-
Well, and I'll mention quickly that Deloitte is a key player in our smart region efforts.
That's correct. Yeah, my next presentation, when I have more time, I'll unpack that for you, the smart region strategy, but it's a pretty significant list, I won't do that today. So again, I just wanted to illustrate for you kind of where are the projects landing? And you'll see, you know, most notably, they're along major corridors, so along I-17, I-10, some along the 101. The opening up of the 303 corridor has opened tremendous opportunities in the West. You're going to see continued investment along the 101, and we're working with a lot of our West Valley cities on corporate Class A office product, and what it will take to yield for the capital markets to invest in Class A office product, because there's virtually no vacancy in the West Valley today for Class A office. And Goodyear is actually advancing, advancing the first product out of the ground with Globe and other partners to build new spec office in the West Valley, which is great, and we're working with a couple of those corridors. Southeast Valley, you continue to see replenishment of Class A office product on spec, and that's, again, part of the complexity is when you have vacant facilities, they get absorbed by the new clients evaluating the market. So that's something we spent a lot of time on the last few years.
How about, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, how about the new, the new incoming 202 in the-
Yeah, so Supervisor Gardo, there's going to be tremendous opportunities in advanced manufacturing, and working closely with the city of Phoenix on ensuring that the infrastructure is in place for that corridor, because it's going to be a very attractive place for skilled manufacturing. And I do think for the next five years, it'll add some ease of congestion from the kind of west into the bypass to the east valley. With that said though, I just know how traffic patterns work, and I have a feeling that will be highly trafficked in the next five to six years. Okay, so the look ahead, this is just starting our campaign for this year. We turn over in July 1 as the first date of our fiscal year. You can see we're trending about where we were a year ago with the exception of prospects. So we got out of the gate really strong last year in prospects. We've already normalized and caught up. You see the 51%, that freaked me out, to be quite candid initially, but that's not a signal yet from the market, and again, I could spend a lot of time going through the economic data of what we're seeing. I'm still pretty bullish, even though there's some, you know, pretty nervous economists out there, but for Arizona and really Metro Phoenix, we generally lag the national numbers, and what I'm seeing in the pipeline today is as healthy as I've ever seen it. So in jobs per project, capex per project, in today's environment, just in the static view I have, still looks very favorable for the next rolling six to 12 months. So you see what the eight projects, we just had our ninth announced with the governor and the Commerce Authority partners last week with Infosys, which is a global BPO operation with Infosys, an Indian company. They moved some short-term space into Sky Song, and they'll be the first publicly-announced location going into the Novus Innovation Center over at ASU. So that's a big win for the market. There are six technology hubs in the US, and the Greater Phoenix region was one of those. You see the average high-wage salary just under 70, so that's trending where we've been in the last few years, in our current active pipeline at 305 projects. Again, the distinction of today is that almost every major manufacturer, every major back-office user headquarters, we're seeing Dallas as the main contender. In addition, we'll see Austin and Seattle, a little bit in Denver, a little bit in Salt Lake City are the main competitor markets today. So this is just a slide that illustrates the last five years of activity, just to give you a running set of numbers. Now, what's interesting is we were really coming out of the recession in calendar year 14 into FY15 for GPEC, and we really hit our stride in the last five years. And again, that was after 17 quarters of recovery in the recession. So it took 12, or 17 quarters to get back from 2008 to 2012 in full recovery, and again, I have guarded optimism of what's ahead in the near term. So you see just the sheer number of prospects that we're hitting, and locate trajectories very similar in terms of new companies entering the market. So just to spend the last two minutes today talking about the look ahead for FY20 plans, these are six kind of clear goals that we've set with our Board of Directors. We will be on October 4th, I'm hopeful that you'll each be able to attend. We're celebrating our 30-year anniversary this year, so we're going to be inviting not only the original five board members of the organization, but some of the political leaders that forged together to create the organization, which allows us all to work together as one regional enterprise. And in addition, we'll be announcing a brand messaging campaign that we'll be advancing, led by the private sector, on October 4th. Second, we'll continue our mainstay work of attracting and growing businesses as we've done in past years. Third is the most pivotal move that we'll be making over the next five years for GPEC is that embedding a really significant data analytics and data sciences system into our model, which is all about predictive analytics and market capabilities. Again, I usually give an hour on that alone, but that's, there's a lot there that I'm really excited about, as we're on the cutting edge of every EDO in the country is looking to us to see how, see what our success will be related to data science integration. Fourth is about our engagement with our cities and our county and other partners. We spend a lot of time understanding the competitive needs of each respective city and how they build into this regional fabric, and I can't understate the value that that's garnered for us, because we're learning so much more about our cities and their product mix, their infrastructure plan, so that it allows us to better kind of cross-pollinate our strategy, and then obviously induce investment inward. Fifth and sixth is the focus on diverse inclusion and equitable economy. We want to make sure that, again, across the entire region, that we have these commerce parks being built, so that we're not seeing, you know, just one part of the market or two parts of the market see the inundation of high-wage jobs. We're really focused on ensuring that each respective market and even trade area has strategies that enable high-wage jobs across the region. So that's, you know, a big item that also ties back to what I talked about with item number four. And then lastly, Sharon and Tim are here with our organization today, and they've been heavily focusing on the operational discipline internally about how we measure ourselves, how we move everything to digital, and so, much like the county has done in the past few years to really optimize efficiency, we're in the same vein where we want to be the strongest economic group in the country and have the culture that represents that. So that's a quick 10 minutes, that's as fast as I can do this, so.
Excellent.
Any questions for me today?
Well, and again, I guess just a quick comment. At our International Leadership Council, one of the things we talked about is something that really would help us a lot for international attraction would be to improve access by air.
Yeah, yeah, Supervisor Sellers, that's a great comment, and this is something that's incredibly complex, but we have one of the top domestic airports in the United States, but we are assessing how do we get more direct flights internationally? And Eurowings is opening up their direct connectivity in the winter coming up, and those kind of direct flights yield international, you know, direct access that enables business travelers to fly direct, and that's, I can't overstate how important that is. And again, we're a young, maturing market, even though we're large, in the vein of global presence, we're still fairly immature relative to pure markets. And it doesn't really help us either that you have the One World and Star Alliance, which, you know, that's a big issue as well, that we don't have the major hubs outside of America, which has been very helpful with our flights into London. But we're going to have to continue to open up these foreign market opportunities, particularly the next in line, I believe will be Tokyo. I do think you'll see Amsterdam in the future, and maybe even a Paris, don't get too excited about that. But there's, there's kind of the next in line based upon current ridership, and what's going to drive that is commerce connectivity. So we have to do our job of driving more international commerce activity here, which will then yield the seats demand that these foreign carriers warrant.
Great point. Other comments? Supervisor Hickman?
Chris, I, you're probably prepared, I hope you're prepared for this question or this answer. I'm seeing things, and even for somewhere down the line, it will become a board decision, but magnet sites.
Yeah.
I've been asked a lot about them recently. Do you feel, well, take us through that a little bit, and then also, what, I still don't grasp the reason for them, as fast and as fluid as we are as, as business people in order to fill the great need about a magnet site. But can you kind of explain that to us and give us your position on it? Because I know that the city of Phoenix does not have them, and other places don't have them, and I'm just wondering why Western Maricopa County feels the need for them.
Yeah, Supervisor Hickman, so magnet sites are a, an opportunity within Foreign Trade Zone, the Foreign Trade Zone Program, which is a federal designation, and what FTZs enable the market to do is provide goods to be brought in in bond, and have duty and fee deferrals or elimination based upon the product coming into the zone, gets taken out of the zone, and either re-exported, there's no duty or tariff applied to that particular product. If, in fact, it enters the US commerce market, the final product actually enters as that new tariff is on the harmonized tariff schedule. With that said, the zones you're referring to, or the magnet sites you're referring to, were a strategy to expedite the process, so that markets could get even more prepared. So when you had an occupant that wanted to go into a designated area, if it already had magnet zone status, it accelerated that process, because you don't have to go through the concurrence letters process for all the taxing jurisdictions, which you do today. What I would argue, in my view of this, is that, you know, the county, number one, is in a position where you move very expeditiously through that process, and most are done less than 30 days. So in other areas across the country, there's been issues of getting the, you know, the quick movement of the approval process, and in our area, that hasn't been an issue. So I'm digging into that further with all those parties that have also communicated to me that they want to see more magnet sites, and I said, I don't want to go search for a problem if it's not there.
Mm-hmm.
Because I haven't seen that yet, but I do know in talking with some of the West Valley cities in particular, they do believe that there's a marketing value of having a designation as a magnet site, because then they can go to the capital markets and say, this site has the designation, and that'll yield further capital and speculative development. The issue, though, long-term is, the only way you're able to achieve FTZ designation is if the occupant qualifies for it. So you could go into a magnet site, but if you're not bringing in goods that have a tariff applied to them, and there's not a substantive value, then, you know, the occupant will not be eligible for FTZ anyway. So again, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, going down a path that makes sense for the county, when I haven't seen an issue yet, you know, as a professional in the industry. And so we are going to continue to understand all the issues that may be present on the private side to help us further come to our conclusion, but that's my position at this point, is I do feel like the county handles these expeditiously, and until that time that changes, then we'll bring it back to you for further consideration.
Okay.
Anything else? Great, great presentation, Chris. Thanks for all that GPEC does, in particular. I want to thank you for your focus on bringing folks together around the smart region issue, and also data analytics. I think your, as you mentioned, you know, your goals and objectives are very consistent with those that we have at Maricopa County, and just appreciate you guys being a great partner on economic development.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it, Chris. Nice seeing you.
Thanks for keeping it short and sweet. So next, we have Mike Mooney from Visit Phoenix. Thanks for being with us today.
Thanks for having us. Morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors.
Morning.
I didn't realize this for 10 minutes. I thought Richard told me that 10 hours.
Uh-oh.
So, as usual, I brought you a lot of content, but I'm not going to be reading slides to you. My job is actually made purely easy this year, because the timing of this coincided with our annual meeting that's coming up with October 1st, that's typically when we release our annual report. So you guys get a sneak preview of the annual report today, as well as our business development plan and our performance, and I'll touch on a few other highlights. So feel free to flip through or watch the screens, see if I can work this, make sure I got it, okay. So basically, this is what Visit Phoenix does. We're a lot of little businesses under one roof. We book the meetings, we service them when they come in, we connect the group meetings with various resources throughout the community, could be venues, places to go, florists, morticians, could be almost anything. You know, our PR team goes out throughout the country, real heavy for spring training, excuse me, spring training, of course, but throughout the year to restore the virtues of the Greater Phoenix area. Our travel industry sales department is always working with wholesale operators, airlines, travel agents, and the likes. So, you know, again, we have, we have a lot of things going on, going on under one roof. The economy's been good. Our local county is, what, the third year now is the fastest-growing county? You know, most of us have come from somewhere else. I told you the story before that my hometown came here, because my dad came up in 1969 and played golf at the Waboom, and that's how we ended up moving here. Businesses do the same thing, so, you know, our economic development partners, you know, they get to take advantage of what we have to offer here. I mean, I've never left. I didn't even stay here for college. But with that good economy, we've also seen our budget grow quite a bit. We are going to have a record budget for 1920 of $19 million. It was just under 17 for the year just completed. That said, there are clouds on the horizon, and we do anticipate somewhere, probably second half of 2020, but I'm not an economist, but this is what I'm hearing when I go around to various conventions, that there should be some sort of a slowdown. And our funding is tied to a three-year rolling average primarily with the city of Phoenix. So this whole destination tends to be one of the first hit in a downturn, and one of the slowest to recover, because there's no drive market, it is supply market. And of course, you know, when times turn south, the single-property business, not the convention center business, but the business that is just as much, if not larger, that we place in throughout the valley, is the first to be hit, particularly those consuming under 200 rooms. So we will just flip through some of these. Supervisor Chukri's not here, so I don't have to point out his name on that list, but he's one of our board directors. We enhanced our mission statement, our vision statement this year, just to be more reflecting of what destination marketing organizations do today. Our organizations have continued to evolve over the years, and it's not just about heads and beds anymore, it's about being at the table with economic development, it's about keeping taxes lower for the residents here. I always joke with Todd from the Chamber, you know, he wants people to come here and stay here, we want people to come here, spend their money, and go away, but, you know, sometimes they do stay. So just to hit some highlights here, again, this budget's going to be a little bit different, this is 16.8 versus 16.9, that's because my slide shows a revenue budget, I'm sorry, my slide shows the expense budget, this shows a revenue budget. We had anticipated a $100,000 loss this year. This market, I don't know if you guys can read, but down in the lower left, we have the Smith Travel Metrics of 2018. Everything was up, and while everything was up, another 860,000 hotel room nights were sold during the year. So when you increase that many rooms, that says something about the strength of your market. And so far, everything is trending up this year. In fact, we are one of the leaders for hotel metrics. That's fairly, not uncommon, because our high season is everybody else's low season. Then in summer, we'll dip a little bit, but then those will start to come back up. Convention Services, they put out 396 leads to members during last year, that's basically one a day, all generating about $300,000 in revenues. They did seven customized client site tours per month. So these are the clients that have decided they're coming in primarily downtown for the convention center, but it's quite, quite large. I mean, we actually hosted 73 groups in the convention center last year, which is the most ever. Visitor Services-
And Mike, let me ask you about that. So on convention services, any downward trends at all, or what are we seeing on that? Because I know there, you're looking out years into the future.
Well, convention sales, we're looking out years in the future, and actually, everything's pacing well. Quite often, I come to you and I say, well, I said '15, I said '17 was going to be a poor year, and I said '19. '21 does not look to be a bad year, now '23, so we're getting kind of a stab. That's where, and when I say bad, it doesn't mean it's going to be a bad year, it just means that it's not pacing where we'd like it to be this far out. So we're not seeing anything. In fact, we're taking efforts, which I'll touch on here, to help secure the longer-term business before a downturn hits. Visitor Services had just under 11,000 people walk into our visitor center downtown, and another 10,000 requests that came in via telephones, emails, that sort of thing. I'll talk more about that a little bit also. Here's, we're getting to convention sales. The team booked 991 total meetings, that includes convention center and the hotel resorts, for about half a billion dollars of estimated direct spend. I kind of want to make a joke, you know, you guys only have to be elected every so often, we have to be elected every week, because we're up against some of the same cities that Chris just mentioned for convention business, and different cities for our single-property business, but we have to get people to come and choose us. Marketing, about 3.7 million unique visits, that's 311,000 per month, pretty good number, and an average of two and a half page views per visit. So obviously, some of those visits are the ones that come, hit one page, and bounce back. Over the top right, we have just under 30,000 printed travel guide requests. This is a declining number, and it makes sense. You know, the younger generation coming up, my daughter doesn't get anything in print, everything is electronic. Same thing, I'll just touch on it now since I alluded to it, with the visitor center. The age brackets that tend to utilize our visitor center are not the younger travelers, because, you know, where do you go when you travel? Yelp, OpenTable, Travelocity, things like that. So we do see a declining, you know, a declining trend in both of those. Social media down the lower right, you see some small percentage growths, 5%, 1%, 14% and 6%. Two things there, we're seeing a maturation of those channels, and also, we undertook no paid growth. You can go out and run campaigns and buy growth in your social media channels, but we're trying to focus on organic growth through those. Next Page Media Relations, staff is actually down during the year, but they had quite a, quite a reach out there. 192 million eyeballs were reached through top-tier publications, and the top-tier publication is something with more than 20,000 in circulation. 346 media assisted us one per day. Membership is not a goal area, but, you know, I do like to point out, we have over 1,000 members contributing about $1,000 each, because it's just about $1 million a year in dues and a like amount in program participation with us. in dues and a like amount in program participation with us. Primarily dining and accommodations, convention services are the three largest categories. Tourism sales, 103 leads, 173 programs hosted, 10 sales missions and six trade shows. So this is a team of two people. So they are on the road constantly. I think they have like the super platinum status with every hotel chain. And that touches on it. So how do we do versus goal? This one, I'll spend a little bit of time on. Basically, we exceeded goals, but we have some sort of an anomaly in the direct spend for the resort sales. I've got a new research person and he and I had some conversations during the year and we were looking at the calculation because we use a different calculation for convention center business than we do for single property. And we're looking at it and we're thinking, are we taking credit for a room night we shouldn't be taking? So we reached out to some of our peers across the country and we kind of got a split vote on that. So we recalculated everything, removing one day. I don't think we were right because I'll use myself as an example. I go to a hotel data conference every year. It's a day and a half conference, but it's in Nashville. So I have to fly out the night before and so I'm there that night and then the next night. And if I want a chance to go on through Dallas in, you know, August, then maybe I've only got two room nights. Typically, it's a three-room night for a day and a half conference. And we have, we had a lot of bookings this past year. We had a record number, 909, that we put into the single properties. But what I saw were a lot of shorter-term bookings, just one room night. But again, if you have a full-day convention, the likelihood that you're only spending one night. So we're continuing to evolve that, but for the sake of, you know, where we are today, that is the number that we utilize. So I also recalculated last year using the same formula. You can see that we came down 52%. But when we started doing the math by the number of delegates and everything, it just doesn't make sense to us. But it is what we put on our reports for now. I can confidently say that it's going to go up somewhat next year, but now we're looking at a formula where we use some percentage of the peak rooms in the hotel room block as opposed to a formula that bases it on attendees' room nights. So when we got all said and done, our county revenue impact using a formula that was provided to us by this body many, many years ago, we were about 97% of where we should have been. And I think I could confidently state that if we were to analyze things or bring someone else in to analyze them, the number would be higher. For our marketing and PR, we exceeded all goals, kept social media engagement. The social media engagement is because, one, no paid growth, and, second, we used to utilize in this composite number Facebook interactions. And we learned during this last year that Facebook themselves even said, you know, you shouldn't use our interactions as any sort of a success metric. So we took them out, but they were in last year. So that hurt that number. Major Travel Promotions, Travel Industry Sales, they exceeded all their goals kind of nicely. The visitor center, I talked about the declining audience, so we can see that here. I typically like to show you where our leads go from the convention sales department. And these color trends stay the same throughout District 5, District 3 and District 2 are always the big winners in getting them because that's where all the hotel product is. Where people actually stay is a little bit different. District 1 tends to prevail more there, but it's still 1, 2, 3. And then our membership dues, around a million dollars, sort of the same thing. District 5, District 2 and District 1, although as we saw, it's not all hotels that are members. It's just that, you know, so many are concentrated around the convention facilities and, you know, the Phoenix area proper. According to ASU and Maricopa County, and we are in no way, shape or form taking credit for these numbers because we know that we do not control or influence every single traveler, but this is the number that keeps going up, is over $24 billion in direct travel spending. Maricopa County was $15.3 billion of that. And in Maricopa County, there's 107,000 jobs being supported by the travel industry right now. Trying to move forward. And these, again, there's a lot of content here, so I'm just going to kind of go through without reading you things. In convention sales, one of the things we're dealing with are the renovations of our three largest downtown hotels are happening simultaneously. So we're having to work with moving and assisting groups with that. At the same time, because of the economy in Maricopa County, just over $3 billion of acquisitions and renovations announced in the last 18 months in the hotel product here. So, you know, everyone else has figured out what's going on here. Let's see. And then one of the things that we're also working on, City of Phoenix, they've had some interest in their South Hall building site. So we're actively involved with the consulting firm that is coming to evaluate what the long-term future of that looks like. No official position to be stated here, but whatever is decided for that site does forever lock in the future of what Phoenix's convention footprint looks like. New thing that we have this year, Director of Resort Sales. Sometimes we've been labeled with being very downtown-centered. And I think I've shown over the years in these presentations, you know, it's about 50/50 for our basistics of where we put things, but downtown is what gets the most publicity from us. They don't televise the lawyers convention or the cattlemen's or anything like that. So one of the things we thought we would do to help foster a more positive outlook on what we do there is we would bring in a true Director of Resort Sales to kind of get in there and make sure that the single properties know exactly what it is that we're doing. So we'll do that with more roundtables and, you know, slightly different management approach. And then I mentioned about recession planning. What we're trying to do because of the financial success of the last few years is we're trying to do everything that we can to secure bookings, not only in the convention center, but in the outlying hotels, so that when that little blip does occur, we're not all caught off guard.
Does that actually help? I mean, how many people walk away from, I mean, when the economy turns?
When the economy turns, the under 200-room nights on peak are going to be the first to get hit. On the large convention side, it's going to be mainly your associations that are the Smurf groups, religious groups, things like that. It's not going to be your largest of the associations because they're bound to have their meetings. They may see some attendance slippage, but your more price-sensitive groups are going to see some sort of attrition. Convention Services, the main goal that we've had in that area is about being, all about the visitor experience. I've been around a long time and things kind of go in circles. I think we've called it different things over the year, but, you know, it truly is the first step in the rebooking of any convention or any piece of business, that the experience be positive. And we've been fortunate with the growth of downtown Phoenix and Phoenix area in general to be able to have that. And, you know, one of the other things we're looking to do in that area is making sure we better educate the meeting attendees because one thing that does continue to come up, despite all the growth, is it's not that there's nothing to do, but there's not enough to do. You know, it used to be the nightlife. Now it's a lack of retail for the convention now again. Marketing, we're undertaking a branding exercise this year, and that's because we actually have two cities. We have the resort destination that everybody knows of and everyone thinks of when they think of Phoenix, but we now have an urban downtown. And we've never had that in, I think it was in '75. We've never had that. So we're trying to figure out how to market those two separate products, kind of under a common grand. So we actually have just recently engaged with the firm and we'll be making that announcement at their end of meeting also, which is on October 1st. Media Relations will continue to do what they do. Right now, he's got some media missions already on the books. He's got six planned for this year. Membership, we already have several programs on the books for our members. In addition to this, we do some special sessions there, and this is where I'm really trying to get to, is we have been able to, because of the economy, really expand our research area. And research allows not only us, but our members and our stakeholders to make much better decisions. Our Director of Research, Eric Kerr, serves on the board for the Tourism and Travel Research Association and numerous subcommittees for our destinations international, which is our trade association. But this is just a listing of some of the projects he's got going right now. Again, this is a department of one. And not only does he have to do this, but he has to deal with our CEO and me popping in his office all the time saying, hey, what is this or how did this occur? So that gets us to what we look like coming into this year. And I've just kind of thrown out some proposed goals for FY '20. Some shrinkage on the single property side with these room nights because we did 403,000 last year, which was our second-best ever. And when we had our best ever the year before, I came back and I informed this board that that was because the large hotel chains were reducing their commissions from 10% down to 7.5%. And we thought that we had, for lack of a better term, you know, a false positive on bookings, and that turned out to be largely true. This year, we produced a little bit better than we expected to. I don't think we had any more of that blip. But coming into next year, we're looking at the pipeline. We're actually proposing a goal that's slightly lower, but with the spend is slightly higher because I'm confident that we're going to resolve our spend number on there. And then on the convention center attendance, 300,000 is our ongoing number for that. We call it Project 300. Our belief is as long as there's 300,000 delegates come through that building, there will never be any difficulty with the debt service or any of the other issues. It's a good number. We actually hit 307,000 last year, which was our all-time record for placements. Marketing, PR, what we'll see over there is we're going to see a little bit less on the media hosted, but a little bit more on the top-tier placements. Media hosted is, it's a big arena. It's everything from bloggers to your top-level reporters and your top publications. And I think we'd like to focus a little less on the lower end of that and get more top-tier placements for the destination. Tourism, I'll call it essentially flat. And visitor services, I'll call essentially flat. With that, I'll thank you for your support. I think last year when I was here, we had not yet confirmed the final four in the Super Bowl, but they are both confirmed for '23 for the Super Bowl, '24 for the final four. So in your package, there are some extra slides on the deck to just kind of touch on the economic impact the last time those games were here. Any questions?
All right. Thanks for the presentation. Questions from my colleagues? Just one question ahead on the social media. So that number is, you know, was fairly low and you explained why that is. Are you going to pursue some paid social media in the upcoming year or what?
No, we're still going with the organic. What you get, you kind of hit, it's like membership. Nationwide, you know, the larger DMOs like us, you get to about 1,000 members and it just stays there. It doesn't matter how many people you throw. And you just seem to hit this point where people are coming and going unless you buy some. And we don't have any research, compelling research today that says we should invest a lot of money trying to build a social media audience, but we do change where we focus. Instagram is an area where we focus a lot more than we did two years ago because that is, of course, very visual and, yeah, it's.
It's constantly changing. There's always some new format somewhere.
Right. And of course, you know, the algorithms keep changing, you know, as it gets your measurements and everything. So we work with the variables and have other firms to try to get a better handle on that as well. So hopefully that's.
All right. Great. Well, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You know, we have, Mr. Chairman, we, you know, it's great we have the Super Bowls and all that, but the one thing that needs to get to land is a political convention. I know there's always been attempts and I think, talk about either side of the aisle. I mean, talk about a spotlight on a city and a state. Yeah, it would be wonderful to have.
And, you know, I think as the state becomes more purple, the likelihood of that becomes higher, you know, because you have to look at how many swing votes you have. Can you actually influence the election? And then, of course, there's always getting the money together at the front end because they cost a lot to put on. A Super Bowl is, it's like pitching pennies.
Yeah. No, I hear you.
But I hear you, and we have chased them both. I actually built the whole timeline in my time.
Yeah, I went back in to, I was Vice Mayor of Phoenix, and we went back to try and get the Republican one in 2016. You saw how much success I had with that. But it was actually great to work with Visit Phoenix and others on that. And actually, I had the chance, I spoke after Senator McCain and Senator Kyle, talked about it tough, and then I blew it. So we were in good shape and then I, obviously, I was.
I actually had the honors of being a delegate for the first time four years ago. And, you know, they've asked before. I'm not really interested. Very expensive, I just don't want to do it. So I went this four years ago and I was just amazed. I tried, every hotel was booked and the number of people that just come down for, just need to be part of the excitement. And it was unbelievable just trying to get a restaurant, just, it was a zoo, but it was fun. It was fun. And I think it's a good way to really spotlight, talk about spotlighting your city and, I mean, the whole world is watching. Yeah.
Absolutely. And we have the team and we have the facilities now to land it. So it's a matter of time, hopefully.
Couple more really large hotels around here would be even better.
There you go. There you go. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next and moving right along, Jennifer and Greg, if you want to join us from Greater Phoenix Chamber. Thanks for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, thanks for having us this morning. Todd sends his regrets for not being here. He is in DC with, we take a delegation to meet with our elected officials in Washington every year. They're out there this week, so he again apologizes for not being here. This morning, we want to share, obviously, an update on what we've accomplished in the last year, but also look at highlights for what we're focused on in fiscal 2020. Just a reminder, the Chamber is focused specifically on business retention and expansion, supporting the work of GPEC and ACA and others that are focused on business attraction. And we share this statistic every year, but we know that 80% of new jobs come from existing businesses in the community. So while expansions are typically not in the headlines, it is definitely the bread and butter of economic development and why we're focused in this specific area. So I'm going to let Greg talk a little bit about our economic development work and then I'll share a little bit more on the foundation side.
So just a quick summary of our goals from this past year. Business retention, expansion, visits, still doing those, but we focus on quality over quantity. We did add something last year, we do a pulse of business survey. We send it out to our members, but we also include other chambers. And generally, we get about eight other chambers across the valley, east side, west side, participating in the survey so we get, I think, a good feel for what businesses, large and small, are feeling. Jennifer will talk a little bit about workforce development in a moment. And we also added last year a regional awareness piece to our contract, and that was our state, our Economic Dome Insider Series, which part of that was State of the County. And it was our best attended event last year. So thanks to Chairman Gates for.
Despite my, yeah, despite the fact that I spoke.
Wonderful presentation.
Still had a great turnout.
We plan to do that again this next year. We also do a monthly newsletter just to keep people aware of what's going on in the economy. Of course, throughout the years, Chamber's always the pillars, one of the pillars has been public policy and advocacy, and we're still working on that and work with your staff too as needed. And then Phoenix Healthcare Sector Partnership, something we took over from the city about four or five years ago. We're continuing to work for with that. Touch briefly on the metrics for this past year. We met or exceeded all of our goals. I won't quote each one, but I will highlight one in the Workforce Collaborative and meetings and number of collaboratives. We had a goal of 16 for the meetings and we way exceeded that. And we thought next year, rather than focus on number of meetings, let's focus on something a little more substantial and adding more collaboratives. And we're going to add two more. Jennifer, we'll talk about that in a moment. Also, as a summary, our goal for visits for the Chamber alone was 100. We hit 120 last year. And we also participated with the City of Phoenix and Arizona Commerce Authority, and together we had almost 1,200 visits last year. And since we started this in March of 2015, over 4,600 visits to local companies. I think a key thing to talk about here is a lot of companies we deal, we deal with all across the spectrum as far as size, but a lot of them are smaller companies. And the smaller companies are the ones that really need the help. They don't know what they don't know. And so I have a good example. We helped a firm that does counseling and she was new to business and like most professionals, she knew her profession really well and she didn't know how to run a business. And she was really struggling financially. I connected her with the Small Business Development Center and she was enrolled in a business[1735.75] financials course. And she told me when I visited her last few months ago, that saved her business, and that was seven jobs at 50,000 apiece. So, those little wins like that make a big difference. Also, last week, met with somebody on Friday, that they were having a problem, meaning through the, last year, getting through the city process for a permit they do needed, and we helped connect them with the city and turned it around, got it done on time, and keeps the project on schedule, which is certainly a big benefit. One thing we have been showing the last couple of years is how the business friendly, and we started this asking people during the visits in 2016, we had 80% of the companies that we had said it was either good or excellent as far as business climate, as you can see from the last ranking in June, 99.5%. I don't have a lot more room to go there, but we're real pleased it's going up, and that's a good sign of the economy overall. One of the things you're hearing lately is a lot of talk about potential recession. Our last survey we did with our companies, we found out that we asked about health of the business and the health of the local economy. And 74% of the companies said it was strong or very strong as far as their business, and almost 79% of the companies said the local economy is strong. So, I think that's a good sign going forward, that we're still in a pretty strong place. And these are, again, small and large companies. But they don't come without challenges, and the biggest challenge we face is workforce across the board. That's by far the biggest challenge. You see the top goal challenge there is availability of labor. It used to be quality of labor. Now, they just want to find a body to get full of positions, and so that's.
The bar's come down a little.
As far as it's down, they really need to have some help.
Are you breathing?
And in some, in some cases, it's prevented them from growing, because they want to grow, but they just can't find the qualified labor to move them forward. Also, a big issue coming up, cost of labor has been over the last couple of years, especially with the minimum wage going up. What we're hearing now is a lot of companies are really concerned when it goes to $12. That's really affecting some of the smaller businesses. Not the big ones as much as the small ones, but the small ones are certainly impacted negatively. And then last, before I turn it back to Jennifer, we start, we launched a new program last year called Find Your Phoenix. And this is a program that is designed to help companies recruit talent to Greater Phoenix. We hold customized tours with the high-level C-suite executives and their families, kind of give them a feel for what's, what Phoenix is all about. We want to keep them and help them grow in Phoenix. And one issue we find out a lot is people coming from another state have to really be educated on the education system here, as far as how to navigate that system, and they're not familiar with open enrollment, some of these terms. So, we spend a lot of time doing that through not only the tours, but follow-up to the tours. So, with that, oh, one last slide. Because of all these visits that we've done over the years, we found, started some workforce collaboratives due to that, found a lot of issues and things we should be addressing. So, I'll let Jennifer take it from there.
And so, as we shared last week, or last year, we have four employer-led, what we call workforce collaboratives. And this is basically where we're bringing employers together in a common, sometimes a common industry or a common type of profession, and we're basically helping them create a better pipeline of talent. So, we have four collaboratives in construction, financial services, cybersecurity, and we also have a hospital group. I'm going to touch on a couple of them quickly. Again, these are all employer-led, employer-driven, where we're bringing employers together and then helping them work with the education community to better, to better prepare a pipeline of talent. So, I think one of our most, our biggest successes this year was with our hospital collaborative. I think there's a lot of confusion when it comes to the nursing shortage in our community. We have a 20,000 nurse shortage by 2025 projected. Yet, we have a waitlist at all of our training and education providers to get that training and education. And once they graduate, many of those new grads are struggling to find employment because they can't get onboarded. And what we found working with the hospitals is the bottleneck is actually with experienced nurses being able to onboard those employee, those new grads, and being able to maintain quality ratios as far as experienced versus new nurses. And there's a significant shortage in specialty nurses. So, there's six specialty areas that we've identified through our collaborative. And a lot of those hospitals over the years have taken on that training internally. But what they're really looking for is somebody that has a year or so of experience that they can move into a specialty area, so ICU, telemetry, oncology. And again, they're taking on that training internally. We've actually been working with them to outsource that training, the foundational training, to Maricopa Community College District. And so, we've been working in three different areas, three different specialty areas, and we've identified three really big challenges to be able to offer that training. One is there's not enough professional staff, nurse, nursing educators that are willing to transition over, and that's something that the employers can help resolve. Similarly, there's a shortage of clinical rounds. Again, employers are offering that, so that's something they can fix. But what we were also struggling with is availability of simulation facilities during peak hours. And we've got some state-of-the-art facilities here, but again, availability during peak hours was challenging. And so, this year, Maricopa Community College District, along with the Chamber and the business community, all advocated for some legislative appropriations, and we successfully received 5.8 million to go into these training centers. So, again, a huge win, and this spring, we'll be launching three of the six specialty trainings as part of that funding. Looking at the financial services side, last year, we talked with you a little bit about a pilot project that we had put together to help with our shortage of licensed financial services professionals. And this year, we were able to transition that program over and make it a sustainable program. We converted it to the new FIE exam that came onboard in October. We also transitioned that program over to Maricopa Parrot College, where we believe it's appropriately housed. And the one thing that's very, very exciting about this particular program is we have been very laser-focused on women and minorities, who are typically underrepresented in these occupations. And so far, our enrolled participants, we have 45% of those candidates are women, 70% are minority, 23% are veterans, and 70% earn less than $30,000 a year. So, this is definitely the target demographic when we're looking for potential job seekers. And the really nice news is they're coming from all of your districts across the board. So, looking at the year ahead, we'll be launching our Build Your Future Arizona campaign next month, so an invitation will be hitting your inboxes very soon. And this is really to change the perception of the construction trades. My daughter came home on Friday, and she was very, very disappointed. She had a birthday lined up at Great Wolf Lodge, and they had to postpone it after announcing that they were going to move it up twice. And the reason they postponed is a shortage of electricians. And we're hearing that time and time again, that we just can't grow the, or we can't build the businesses or build the buildings fast enough. And so, we know this is a huge strain on our economy. So, we're really excited to get that off and running. On the cybersecurity front, we've also been working with SRP. They've actually piloted Apprente, which is an apprenticeship program that was developed in the state of Washington, focused on mid-level IT talent. And SRP has actually used Apprente to train 10 of the folks that are being released from the Navajo Generation Station. They train 10 of those folks that are operating in a coal plant to transition into IT business analyst roles, and they'll start their employment here later this month. So, really, really excited to scale that up and launch our first official cohort in January. As Greg mentioned, we're also looking to expand to two new collaboratives in the upcoming year, in advanced manufacturing as well as information technology. And we're partnering with several organizations that are already operating in this space. For example, there's an advanced manufacturing collaborative, collaborative already established with the state that we'll be partnering with to, so we can avoid duplication of effort. Really quickly on the wellness front, Wellness A to Z, you may recall, is a program that was actually started as part of our, was a spin-off of our industry healthcare sector partnership. And this year, we just added our 100th employer onto that platform. This is a free service for employers. And we also launched Wellness A to Z Core Two Salud, focused on the Hispanic community. Looking at the year ahead, we're going to maintain focus on quality business retention visits, keeping our goals roughly the same, providing stronger data and analytics on the business climate, also enhancing and scaling our workforce collaboratives, and continuing to promote Maricopa County as a great place to live, working life. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions?
Let me, I guess, Mr. Chairman, it's more, more of a comment, and I was thinking about it, it changed my mind as you were giving your presentation. We had this discussion over the weekend with my congressman, Mr. Gallegos, out in Levine yesterday at a community meeting. Around 100 people showed up, various questions, but a lot of folks kept bringing up the whole issue of Prop 105, the light rail going down South Phoenix, and the impact of all the small businesses down there. We all saw kind of what happened going north, now it's going south. And I tend to say that the businesses going south are much different than those businesses even going north. I mean, I even, I remember having a discussion way back when Ken Chevron had his little restaurant right there, and he said, Steve, it was devastating. It hurt him bad. He since went to the airport, now he's probably doing very well. But nonetheless, those businesses going down south have a legitimate complaint. And, and I was talking to the congressman, saying, hey, you know, we all came out and opposed 105. We really understand the importance of expanding our transportation needs throughout the valley, but these businesses do have a legitimate concern, small businesses. It is going to be devastating. You talked about the small businesses with only seven employees. That's all of them. That's all of them. Those businesses, those businesses don't have more than 10 employees. They're all small. They're all minority-owned businesses. So, what, now it's time for us, as elected officials, tell the congressman, it's time for us now to step up. Okay, we won, the defeated, transportation's moving forward, but we still have an issue. And they have a legitimate complaint. So, I even, matter of fact, this morning, put a call in to Councilman, Councilwoman Pastore, said, hey, we got to talk. Now that this is, you know, we did all the press conferences, and we encouraged people to come out and vote, now it's time for us. Now that, now it's over, now it's time to step up and do stuff. Is there anything on your horizon in terms of any discussions? Because I think it's time for us to get together and figure out a way to support some of these businesses, other than telling people to go to South Phoenix and shop there. We got to do more.
Right.
Has that been a discussion?
So, you're absolutely right, and the Chamber was at the forefront of.
Yeah, we're with you.
Vote no against Prop 105. And you are right, we do need to make sure that we're servicing those businesses, so that, that actually isn't something that was on our radar, but we can absolutely incorporate that into our strategic plan for the upcoming year. And I know that the city has a lot of resources allocated to ensure those companies are successful, but we're happy to work with them to be a partner there.
That's something I asked, the question that I think caught some of the electives is, we had members of the legislature there, myself and others, and it kind of caught a couple of folks off guard, and it should not have. And this is a discussion, I was telling the Congress, let's get the mayor. The mayor needs to come in and be part of this, this discussion. I mean, I didn't, I don't agree with how Phoenix rolled it all out again. Nonetheless, now it's over. Now, how do we, how do we come together as elected officials and government entities to figure out what can we do, and working with you all, and helping ensure that these little small businesses, that's all small businesses down there for the most part, are not just swallowed away because of the light rail?
Good point. Yeah, thanks for raising that, and I'd be happy to talk to you about my experience, because I was representing District 3 on City Council when the extension was built up to 19th Avenue and Dunlap. So, we had a lot of real-world examples of what you're talking about, and that's, that's one of the concerns with light rail, of course, and it does have very negative impacts on the businesses while the construction's going on. Any other questions? All right. Thanks so much for the presentation. Please give, give Todd our best. And now, we're going to shift a little here, just with sensitivity to the time and everything, but we're all excited to hear from Mr. McGuire. Thank you for joining us. Now, we're shifting to, we touched on this a little bit in all the presentations, but what to expect with our economic forecast. Thanks so much for joining us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Rich, Mr. Carroll, my name's Alan McGuire. I'm an economist, been here a long time, I dealt mostly over the years. I'm going to go through this relatively quickly, you've got all the material. So, I'm going to talk about the overall economy, looking from the top down, because Arizona's much more integrated than we used to be. So, what happens in the world in the U.S. is way more important than it was in the past. Looking at the global economy, I think is where we should start, look a little bit at the overall context of what's going on in the world. The IMF forecasts 3.45% growth for global GDP, that's up from 2019. I think that's probably a little optimistic, frankly, given some of the problems overseas, but we'll see. You've heard a lot about Brexit, you've heard about the EU. Germany is already in negative growth year over year, so they're on the edge of a recession potentially. China has big problems, you've read about that in the paper, the Hong Kong problem and demand within the, in the country. They have exploded their overall debt. They now have more debt per GDP than Greece does, so that gives you a sense, they've reached a limit of how much they can borrow. And the real challenge, frankly, to me, is India, because India is, I think, the long-term future. So, here's the forecast for IMF. And you can see generally, they're a little lower for 2020 than over, than 2019, so predict slowdown. The IMF does not have the best track record, because I think politics entered into their forecasts a bit, but I think, frankly, they've been, they've been low on the U.S. almost every year for the last four or five years. But you can see, you can see China's down, India's hanging in there. I think that's way over optimistic, frankly. But what's interesting for me there is that the UK does not show a drop. So, to some extent, they've sort of written off the Brexit anxiety, and I think actually the Brexit problem is a bigger problem, frankly, for Europe, EU than it is for, it is for England, it's written itself. So, what's happened since the, since the crisis? Well, we had this sort of long, slow, postponed recovery, never had a big giant, you know, expansion like you would expect. Typically, the economy, I sort of talked about, it's like a Super Bowl, the harder you throw it down, the higher it bounces back up. It, we threw it down really, really, really hard, and it just sort of laid there. It just, like, it got lost all of its bounce. So, very different recovery. I think the most important lesson was the limitations on monetary stimulus. I mean, I hate to say it, but John McCain's is still dead. And, but in the last couple of years, really from about middle 19, 2016, the U.S. has kind of moved back to the economic leader in the world, and that's important. You see that positive influence spreading across the country. So, let me go back, and this is my, this is a slide from 2016. And you can see in general that the tone of the slide is much more cautious, much more negative. We really didn't know what was going on back then. We're really concerned. I'm sure you all heard 1,000 times about the new normal. What's the new normal? What does that really mean? Are we going to have permanently lower rates of growth in the U.S. below 2% going forward or not? Well, I think things have changed quite a bit in the, in the recent years. So, here's a chart of U.S. GDP. And the growth domestic product is not the best measure of things. It was developed around World War II for some specific reasons, but nonetheless, it's the index we use most, most frequently. What we had for a number of years coming out of the recession was slow, sort of, kind of blog growth. It was okay, not terrible, but okay. And frankly, after 2007, 2008, 2009, anything looked good. I mean, we were desperate for anything positive. So, from 2016, you can see it started to pick up. It's better, but not over the moon. We're late in the cycle. We'll see what happens. My sense is that some important things have happened in the last few years. One, we've seen, and I'll talk about it a little bit more, we've seen employment increase dramatically. And we've also seen it widen, and you've heard some of that just in your prior presentations. We have a much more diverse economy in the U.S., and we're seeing growth in the U.S., in the U.S. also widening, and that's very important. And the real critical thing then maybe the last 12 to 18 months from my perspective is, we have a whole lot of people who have done one of two things. They have either landed a job for the first time, which is a crucially, I mean, the first job you get changes your life, right? Your whole trajectory of your life changes. So, that's really important. And we've also seen a return to growth in our labor force. Our labor force has been tracking down for about 20 years. We've seen some turn. It's still lower than it was historically, but that's a very important thing, because that means people have a sense of optimism that they might actually be able to get a job. And that's certainly affecting Arizona. One of the things, one of the reasons I think that Arizona has above-average unemployment is that every time we create some more jobs, we entice more than that number of people to go look for a job, right? So, they go from being not in the labor force, not playing the game, to suddenly being in the labor force but unemployed. So, that's actually an okay thing. The biggest thing about this recovery is that it's really, really been choppy. This is quarterly data, and you can see up, down, up, down, up, down. I mean, you can remember probably the last few years, every, every January, you would hear, oh, it's going to be another bad first quarter, right? It's going to be a bad first quarter. Well, last year, the first quarter, the bad first quarter came in the fourth quarter, right? So, the fourth quarter of 2018 was lousy, but the first quarter of 2019 was good, but very choppy, very inconsistent with prior, with prior recoveries. Mr. Chairman, what's causing that? It's a good question. I, I think part of it is that the whole economy has become much more nimble in a sense, in a, in a negative sense. You, you may remember, um, twenty years ago, the concept, maybe thirty years ago now, the concept of just-in-time inventory. Don't keep anything in stock, but, because I can get it really fast. So, um, and we saw that because frankly FedEx, FedEx, right, said, I can get you parts overnight. So you can let your supply get pretty low and just watch rewatch, right? And if you talk to people who manage those, uh, for large production companies, they, their inventories are five percent of what they used to be in the old days. I grew up back east and I can remember driving through the countryside and you'd pass a auto plant and there would be thousands of cars in the big parking lot there waiting to be delivered. We don't do that anymore. We have a much tighter control over that side and the opposite side is true as well. Probably starting in about the nineteen nineties, um, we started to treat personnel like we treated inventory. So we lay people off much more quickly than we used to and we hire them back a little bit slower. What that tends to do is have a good quarter, bad quarter, good quarter, bad quarter. And one of the things that pushes around, uh, quarterly GDP numbers, that it's really hard to kind of scrub out is inventory, right? Am I, if I'm manufacturing something, it shows in, it shows up in gross domestic product. But if I'm, if I'm manufacturing it for short-term inventory, I go up this quarter, next quarter I go down because I'm burning the inventory off, right? So it's a function of, and if you think about a big plant like a automobile plant, you don't start it up for five vehicles. You start it up for five thousand or ten thousand and that might be a four-month supply. So after you build them, you gotta shut down, burn your supply down. Uh, that's part of the reason for the choppiness. The other reason is, for much of that period, we had a lot of uncertainty. People would start, stop, start, stop. Um, I would hope that going forward, we'll see a little more consistency there. And there's some annual cyclicality there. So now I'm gonna talk about sort of the news of the day for you. Um, you know, we hear a lot about the role of the Federal Reserve, we hear a lot about unemployment levels, I'm, excuse me, employment levels, and we hear, hear a lot about the Treasury curve, which is kind of important. So, so first, let's talk about the Federal Reserve. So this is a graphic of the Federal Reserve balance sheet, right? This is how much money is held by banks, um, as a part of the overall reserve structure, right? So beginning in about two thousand and nine, Chairman Bernanke started pumping huge amounts of liquidity into the system. He actually started liquidity in two thousand and seven, but the big balance sheet changes started in two thousand and nine. So what does that mean? So if you think back to the, those wonderful days of two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight, remember, we had, first we had Bear Stearns go down. And Bear Stearns was important because they're the largest commercial paper dealer in the country. So that meant all the commercial paper for all the major industries, all Fortune 500 companies was now at risk and, and they could have huge cash flow problems. So Bernanke pumped through the New York Fed, pumped a ton of money into the liquidity market. Um, and, uh, so Bear Stearns is about to collapse, so they called up JP Morgan and say, swallow hard, you get to have, Bear Stearns is part of your organization. Oh, and by the way, six months later, you get to have Washington Mutual. Remember Washington Mutual, they were one of the worst subprime lenders. So JP Morgan Chase, which had run itself pretty well through that period of time, their reward was, here, swallow hard. And they got Bear Stearns and Washington Mutual. Now, six months after that, they gave Bank of America Merrill Lynch, right, which was also in trouble, and then Countrywide, which was the other terrible lender, right? So we took our two strongest banks and did everything we could to kill them, but they survived, thank goodness they survived. And then finally, when, when they got to Lehman Brothers, which, I mean Lehman Brothers was a fine institution founded in eighteen fifty, you know, before the Civil War, gone. They went bankrupt. And that's when, that's when the roof fell in. Because the day after the Lehman Brothers collapsed and their declaration of bankruptcy, that's when we had the big drop in the stock market. So that's what led that process. Um, but in response to that, that's when Bernanke did this. He put massive amounts of money, um, into the, into the marketplace, pushing money out to the banks, right? Pushing it out, pushing it out, pushing it out, trying to get the banks to lend, to encourage activity, to get the economy started again. Ironically, sadly, right on top of Bernanke's efforts, we passed Dodd-Frank. And Dodd-Frank froze the banks because they dumped huge amounts of unwritten regulations on the banks and the bank's reaction was to stop. So they did nothing. So they had all this cash from the Federal Reserve, but they were afraid to push it out. And it took about eighteen months, um, longer for the regulations to be written. And so the bank system had lots of money, but didn't, couldn't do anything, right? So that's part of what happened. So Bernanke's response was, well, if a little's not good enough, I'll do more. And so you can see that massive increase. And you can see that long line with that, you know, that's, that's decades and decades of the balances. So the amount we've done in the last ten years just dwarfs anything in the past. I mean, absolutely dwarfs it. We never had really used this kind of balance sheet effort like that before. So, so what did that mean? So, um, so for the first two years or so of, of the, of the recovery, we're pushing massive amounts of money into the system. That should have been tailwinds for the economy. Things should have been going. About two thousand and sixteen, we reversed course, um, and, uh, we reversed course and now we have a headwind, right? So, you know, we, when Bernanke started cutting rates in two thousand and eight, we were at five percent. We went basically to zero, point two five percent, right? Um, so then we go forward and two thousand and fifteen, we're at point two five percent and we go, our rates go up to two point two five percent. And you can see that period in there, that, this is the Fed. So what does that mean? Well, we've had a lot of complaints about the Fed funds rates and what, what all that means, but it's the same basic effect. We went from historic levels to zero and now we're climbing back up about two thousand and sixteen. So again, a period of tailwinds for the economy. If you had credit, if you, if you had quality credit, you could borrow money. Now we're raising rates and it isn't that rates are high. Rates are now, you know, two point two five percent. That's not a high rate. You know, I'm sure you can remember when rates were eighteen percent, seventeen percent. This is basically zero. But you have to think, it went from point two five to two point two five. That's a ninefold increase, right? It's not, it's nominally a low, low rate, but it's a huge change and that affects all kinds of stuff. So, um, so the Fed frankly was pretty ineffective in helping us for the first six or eight years of the, of the recovery. And now it's actually kind of hurting us, the other way, because they've got to get back to normal. But it isn't like the economy's that robust it can take that, that recovery, that rebound there. So let me look at another big indicator. This is jobless claims. Now, jobless claims, this is the first time someone claims, files unemployment, not if they're repeat, but the first time claims. First time claims are really important because they tend to be a leading indicator. They show you when things are gonna happen. First thing you need to notice is, they are at the lowest they've been since the sixties. That's really low. And you can see how high they got in two thousand and ten. I mean, they're, they're screeching up at the top there. And you can see the back, the other big peak back there, that's the, that's the Carter-Reagan recession recovery period back there. Um, and so it's been a long time since we had rates, uh, initial claims like we had in two thousand and ten. But, um, since then, um, you know, we've been, had this nice, long, slow decline in them. I mean, that's an amazing curve since, since the beginning of the recovery. That's just fewer and fewer people. In early years, initial claims were low because, were dropping because if you had a job, the last thing you did was give it up, right? Which is why we saw no growth in wages, because people weren't threatening their boss. They were basically happy to have a job. They weren't saying, well, I'll go next door and get five dollars more. They were saying, I'm just, you doing okay? Can I bring you a donut? So it's a very different, very different time. But, uh, but, but now let me turn to the second big one, which is the yield curve. And people are talking about this a lot. And what does it mean? So this is a, this is a graph of the spread between the ten-year Treasury bond and the two-year Treasury bond. So in other words, how much higher are long-term ten-year rates compared to two-year rates? Now normally, what we know is that, um, longer-term rates are higher than short-term rates because the longer I'm gonna make a loan, the more risk I have, the less willing I am to give you a low rate. So that's why we talk about the inverted yield curve, which is a period of time when the two-year gets higher than the ten-year, right? And there's been a lot of chatter about that in about the last, oh, sixty days or so. So you can see, the, the arrows point to places where there was an inversion, right? That's a period of time where the two-year was higher than the ten-year. And you can see almost every time, there's a little gray band, a few months after that, that's the recession. And, and that's, it's been pretty consistent, I could walk you through all the dates, but it's somewhere between six months and a couple of years. The one time where it, it really didn't hold entirely was in the two thousand eight to two thousand and ten recession, because that was a different kind of recession. It was a financial crisis that triggers in a different way. Because it happens very quickly, as I, as I mentioned, over a period of a year, we had four, four of the largest banks in America fail essentially. Uh, we, we protected them, but they essentially would have failed otherwise. So it, it hit in a different way. So the real question is, where are we now? Well, you know, do we have an inversion right now? Well, we actually had one for a couple of days, a couple of weeks ago, but now it's un-inverted, if that makes sense. But, so, so why does that matter? Well, what normally happens? Um, so typically, what happens is the long end drops and the short end stays about the same way. In this case, it's been the opposite. The short-term rates have risen while the long-term has stayed about the same. Uh, and that's because, you know, Chairman Yellen and Chairman Powell now have been pushing on short-term rate by raising the Fed funds rate. So normally, it kind of goes like, you know, like this, this time it went like that, right? Completely different reason and I think that's why it plays differently. Um, I mean, and, and here's a couple of other facts that I don't hear very much about. So the two gold standards arguably in the world for, for almost virtually risk-free debt are the U.S. Treasuries and the German Bund, the German, uh, the German National Bonds. German Bunds have a negative interest rate right now, negative. I give you ten dollars, you give me eight dollars back. Man, is that a necessity. Thank you very much, I'll do that all day. And there, there are about fifteen trillion dollars worldwide of government bonds that now have negative yields, okay? And here's the one that just makes me nuts. So Italy, I mean, I love Italy, great wine, you know, possibly. But, but their ten-year rate is almost identical to the U.S. ten-year rate, okay? In, in financial markets, Italian bonds are basically junk bonds, right? I mean, they've had a lot of challenges economically. And the U.S. is risk-free debt, but their rates are exactly the same, okay? So if you're sitting anywhere in the world, particularly if you're in Germany for example, or the EU, or in China, or Japan, or, I could go on, um, and you can buy Italian bonds for ten years, or you can buy U.S. bonds for ten years, what are you gonna buy? Well, we know that more buyers make prices go down, right? Bond prices go down. Um, so the yields get, the prices go up, the yields go down. So part of what's happening with the ten-year is this flight to quality and most importantly, safety. And we've, we've seen that a, a number of times. So let me turn now, so, so in essence, the big three, uh, projected triggers for the recession, they're working, but they're not there yet. So let me turn a little bit and look at the, the U.S., okay? So continuing solid growth, you know, um, it, there's problems in the world out there, Europe, China, Brexit, but our confidence is solid. We still have some policy risk, you know, depending on what the Federal Reserve does, depending on what the Congress does, depending on what happens with tariffs. Um, so we're down a little bit from last year, but we're not dramatically down, you know? The forecast for the, for twenty, nineteen and twenty has gone a little bit from the forecast for nineteen to twenty, but still pretty strong. We have some, some significant worldwide challenges. We have slowing demand. Uh, China has to sort out its house right now. We'll see how China gets through this. They have real challenges. Um, they have, they have sort of a budding middle class and that budding middle class has very different expectations. And as I mentioned earlier, they have piled out a huge amount of borrowing to keep jobs going when there was, you know, classic roads to nowhere literally in China. I mean, but serious roads to nowhere. Not little short ones, big long ones. So we'll see what happens. India has got some serious internal problems, but we'll see. It's urbanizing at a rate that's just phenomenal. They're building like an entire Chicago over there every month. They're probably so fast. Let me turn to Arizona real quickly here. Uh, it's important, I think, I spent a lot of time on the U.S. and the global context because Arizona looks more and more like, um, the U.S. We're much more diversified than we were thirty years ago. We tend to follow the trend much more. We used to almost be counter-sigilable because of the kind of things we produce. But I think what I see is returning to trend over the last three to four years, but the question is which trend, right? Are we going back to the eighties? Are we going back to the nineties? Or going back to the two thousands? Hopefully not the two thousands, that was kind of a rough ride. Uh, the eighties and the nineties are a little bit better, so it's definitely not gonna be like it was, but I think it's gonna be okay. Uh, one of the things that we've seen is our, 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 consumers are cautious and actually that's a good thing. Because what we see is, uh, uh, well, I'll talk a little bit about that in a second, but first, this is, this is, I wanna compare U.S., Arizona and Maricopa County employment. This is U.S. employment. I, I'm sure you can probably figure out where that big hole is, right? Okay, and that's a pretty big, that's a pretty big hole. So now I'm gonna take that same hole, I'm gonna layer Arizona over the top, okay? So if you thought the U.S. was bad, welcome to Arizona. Those are percentage changes and you can see how dramatically more significant our drop was in the U.S. as a whole. And that was because of the housing bubble and the crisis. But we started to recover. You can see by two thousand and twelve, we're a little bit above the U.S. line. By two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, we're well above the U.S. line. You hear that in all the numbers you hear. We are now relatively consistently, you can see there, four or five years tracking above, above the U.S. That's very good. That's good for our, for capital income levels, good for a lot of things in Arizona. And then I, now I add on the new line of Maricopa. Now, Maricopa looks an awful lot like the state of Arizona because of this banking to the Maricopa economy. But it was actually a little worse in the, in the down times and a little better in the good times. So that's a very positive sign for this county. And the most important thing is you can see that two-plus percent rate of growth in employment has been fairly consistent and seems to be tracking. Now, if you start to see that trending down, then I would be, start to think about a recession. But I don't think this is the kind of recession short of some kind of a crisis, right? Some internal, uh, force. Um, it's gonna, it's gonna happen quickly. It's gonna be more of a fade recession than a boom recession, if that makes sense. So, so we've been doing pretty good. Now I'm gonna, I'm gonna change a little bit and I wanna talk about sectors, because I think sectors are something you can look at that is very useful to you. So those two lines are total employment on the top and private employment on the, on the, in the yellow line. And you can see by two thousand and fifteen, we were back to where we were in two thousand and seven. And that's, doesn't sound like much, except when you think about the fact that how heated the economy was in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. So we've gotten back to that high level. But if you note, it's a, was a very slow, steady pace and I think that's actually a very big deal. Um, because it feels to me, and talking to people, and even when you're talking about construction, you heard about the construction problems, um, the growth this cycle is very different than it was ten years ago, or fifteen years ago now. It's much more consistent and solid and steady. And that's the way, that's what you want. You don't want up, you don't want that choppy but fat. You want a nice, solid line, right? So here's three, three key sectors that I think are useful to pay attention to. The red line is construction, the yellow line is manufacturing, and the white line is financial services, okay? And you've heard about all three of those, um, basically from, uh, from Jennifer and the people from the Phoenix Chamber. And I'm gonna look at each of them kind of differently. So let's, let's take a look at construction. You all remember, right? You all remember, right? The bottom fell out with the construction, employment. It was really horrible. I mean, it was, you know? I have a thing I call the white pickup index. The white pickup index is when you get on the freeway, particularly the ten through the center of the valley. And so, you drive five miles and you count the number of white pickups you see, right? What does that tell you? The more white pickups, the more stuff's getting built, right? Little contractors rather, they drive white pickups. Okay, so, two thousand and seven, you might drive-
And egg farmers.
And egg farmers. A lot of folks, a lot of working people drive a white pickup, you know? So, in two thousand and seven, there might be forty in that period of time. Two thousand and nine, there was one, because they all packed up and went to Louisiana. But construction went down, but here's the more important point. It came back, not to the peak, because that was not good, that was too hot, right? But it came, it's coming back and it's coming back nice and solid and that's constraining the housing market, but that might be a good constraint. Sometimes you've got to hold your horse back a little bit so he doesn't wear out too fast, you know? It's a much better long-term trend. You can see manufacturing rebounding and financial services rebounding. So, here's some comparisons. Now, look at the two, the two lines, the yellow and the white line, manufacturing and financials in two thousand and, that was two thousand and seven, right there. They're all, they're below construction and they're almost exactly equal, right? So, by today, well, excuse me, can we go back? Let's see, I skipped two. But now look what's happened, right? Manufacturing has recovered. It's now equal to construction. That's a diversified economy. We now have many people working in manufacturing as many in construction. That's a very positive thing. And financial services has now exceeded both of those by a significant amount. That's true diversification, right? That's, that's Charles Schwab, USAA, that's all those financial services. That's a completely different sector. And what's important about manufacturing and financial services is, they sell to the world. They don't just sell to us. Construction is really a local activity, right? You don't build a house and ship it somewhere. You build it and you live in it, right? It's local activity. Manufacturing and financials are, are export markets for us. So, that's very important. So, what does Arizona look like now? Well, we still have cautious consumers. We have some overhanging debt. In two thousand and seven, it was, everybody was underwater in their house. Now, it's their kids' student loans, right? We've changed, we've swapped out our debt. We have some changes in our demographic, we have some retirement anxiety. Probably the worst shock that happened to the American public in, since the Great Depression for sure, was people who had large amounts of their family assets in their home and in their retirement account, right? Two thousand and eight, those both disappeared. Your home, house value went down forty percent and your, your stock market value went down sixty percent. So, your retirement went from, wow, isn't it going to be wonderful to, oh my God, I'm working till I'm ninety. And you hear that, you see delayed retirements in that consumer class. Consumer confidence has grown, I'll talk a little bit more about it in a second, but on a nice, steady rate, that's a very good thing. But here's the real thing. It's all about jobs. We talk about a lot of stuff in Arizona, but what really matters in Arizona is jobs. And our job numbers look really good. We are well above the national average, continued strong growth, and there are better jobs. You talked about that with one of the prior speakers. The, the, it was Chris Camacho, the earnings level of those jobs is getting higher and higher and higher. That's a very big thing for a state like Arizona, which has below-average household incomes. Here's the forecast from a blue chip. You can see twenty nineteen, two point six, twenty twenty, four point two. An equally important retail sales, that's important for you for your sales taxes, important as a measure of the economy. Five point oh, four point now, yeah, they're softening a little bit in twenty nineteen, but they're not dropping. If those numbers were one point five for jobs and, and say, three percent for retail sales, I would be more concerned about twenty and twenty-one than I am right now.
So, Alan, on, on that, you read maybe about national retail, about these long-term national retailers going under or in extremely precarious positions. But it doesn't show that it's, that here, that that's going down much. Does that mean those retailers have been replaced by local bricks and mortar or Amazon warehouses? Or what, what does that mean?
Right. Well, so, so consumers aren't buying less, they're just buying different. They're buying in different places, right? I mean, you know, if you think about it, a million years ago, the first sort of retail revolution was the Sears catalog, right? My mom grew up on a farm in Minnesota, didn't have electric power, literally, she remembers when the first Sears catalog came, came to their, to their farm. They couldn't buy stuff that they couldn't get if they drove for four days and it would get delivered to their house, to the farm. That's a huge change, right? That's really no different than what happened when Walmart became this massive aggregator of products they're putting into one place, or Costco, or whoever, or, you know, Sam's Club. And the new one of that is Amazon and the online markets, right? And, and Target and Walmart are almost as big as Amazon now. So, we're seeing a complete shift. There's, there's a lot of reasons for that, but, you know, it's kind of like going back to the old Sears catalog, right? Except it's on the internet, you know? You can, you order it, it comes to your house. And, and now, I have this knowledge how they do this, they have one-day delivery. How do you do that? I mean, I can barely get to the grocery store much they deliver something, but they do it. And, but that's a real change in, in mode as opposed to final result, right? You're getting, you're getting the same shirts and coats and shoes and stuff, right, that you were getting before, you're just getting them from someplace else. And that's the other big thing about Amazon that we sometimes forget.
You have to sell eggs online, brother.